Okay, thank you. I call this meeting to order at six oh two P M here in the Veterans Room. This is a meeting of the Joint Planning and Development Subcommittee. Um, it's Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, again, six oh two P M. Um, it's possible a forum of the Town Council may be present and discuss the agenda items, but voting rights shall be limited to Subcommittee members in attendance. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. Um, Agenda item number one is a call to order. Agenda item number two is roll call. Uh, Counselor Daniel is present. Counselor Adams is excused. Counselor Rebus is absent, but is expected shortly. Uh, uh, Citizen Member Bernadone is excused and Citizen Member Larochelle.
Here.
Is present. Very good. Vice Chair Marquette is stepping in so that we have a quorum. Um, and he shall remain until such time as it's no longer necessary. Item number three, consider and accept the minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Solved.
Thank you. Any changes, edits, anything needs to be done? Everyone okay? Very good. Um, all those in favor of approving? Three oh. Very good. Item number four, review discuss entering into an agreement with Seven Ventures L L C for ninety-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars to provide a zero percent commercial improvement loan to make improvements consistent with their application, helping trigger the occupancy of currently vacant or soon to be vacated spaces at thirty-nine Elm Street, using ARPA funds appropriated June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, Agenda item number forty-six, and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to Town Council for approval. Very good. I'll start with, um, Ms. Dean.
Or the town manager.
Or the town manager.
I told the chair that I would defer to you. I, I did. The one thing is that on the ARPA, I know I had brought up comments of prior, prior meetings about the definition of obligation and make sure that meets that definition. Peg has just showed me that this does fit in within those requirements. It's been fully vetted, so we are good to continue on this because it is a loan program, replevement program. So we're good on that front, so. And we got to this property next door. Uh, we were happy that Matthew, uh, who's here tonight, uh, took ownership of that property. That was a lot of hard work between, uh, Peg and, uh, I chimed in a little bit, but put the people in place. So we're happy that that facility is staying where it is because it was a potential that it could have been knocked down by the prior owners. So, um, we're fortunate that we have that and to look forward to working with, uh, uh, Mister, uh, this group, especially with Mister Higgins. I've known that for a long, long time. I grew up with my son and it's nice to see some young people invested in Southbridge. As we transition to retirement, that the younger generation is taking foot in a community that they grew up in. So with that little spiel, I will turn it over to Peg.
The contract for the loan is included. It's pretty straightforward. After one year, uh, the loan comes due, one, the first payment comes due. Uh, and, uh, so he will be paying us back over the following seven years. That goes into a revolving fund, which we can then disperse out to future investments in the downtown. Um, the attorney did, um, vet the program before we opened it up to the public. Um, it is, all of the ARPA funds that have been committed to economic development, the first two fifty and then the next fifty thousand are now committed. Uh, so we are done with our ARPA loan program, um, according to the ARPA terms. Um, and, uh, I think that's about it. The application within it talked about what the purpose of the loan is for. Um, and, uh, again, Matt's here if you wanted to ask questions.
Okay.
There's still a couple. First of all, any of the work that's being done, is it going to be prevailing wage because it's an ARPA fund or can it does not have to be, does not follow the criteria?
Um, so the way it works is it's a private contract between them and a contractor. We're, we're not involved in any of the contracts. So it's for them to, um, hire them at, uh, not using prevailing wages.
Okay. And my second question was, I know the amount that he's borrowing that's here. Like the Worcester elevator, the proposal was only good until December of twenty twenty-three. Do you see it being a lot more, a little bit more? I mean, are you gonna have enough for everything you want to do, I guess?
No.
Then, no, not even close.
Not even close, huh?
No. So the quote for the elevator, I think, was one thirty. I'm anticipating with inflation and some other things, maybe it'll come back at about one fifty. We're still waiting on Worcester elevator to provide that quote for us. We also have two other quotes from other companies, Stanley Elevator, and there's one other company that's gonna be providing this quote, uh, soon as well, too. So it could be, you know, fifty, uh, plus or minus that one thirty, one fifty.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Counselor Marquette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through. So we have three hundred thousand in ARPA.
Correct.
And you still have ninety-nine thousand dollars left? Because I know you gave some to Hugo and then you gave some to the guy over here at the credit union. I thought that those were like over a hundred thousand each, so.
They were almost a hundred each. So that brings us up to almost two hundred, or over two hundred. We have one fifteen that we gave to, um, Greg Cummings at two oh five Main and then the, um, whatever it was, the ninety thousand that they gave to you all.
Oh, I thought it was like, like a hundred and fourteen. I couldn't remember. Um, yeah. Total equipment options here is eighty-seven four, so maybe that doesn't include the entire.
Yeah, so there is, um, uh, included on that quote was about thirty thousand in cosmetic upgrades. So if you were to ever go in the Elm Center, you know, the, the, um, the doors and kind of the, uh, metal trims, you know, the buttons, those kinds of things would all be upgraded as well. They're options, but we would, we would, we would wanna do the cosmetic upgrades too because we're gonna be upgrading, you know, a lot of the different fixtures and features throughout the building, so it wouldn't make sense to leave the dated, dated components in the, uh, the elevator.
And in that building, the woodwork is beautiful, so it would be all crushed.
No, we're not taking that.
My, my wife, when she was a little girl, used to go into the doctor's office.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it needs to be repaired, like some of the, some of the railings and stuff need to be repaired, but, yeah, we'll be leaving a lot of the, uh, kind of the architectural detail inside the building.
Too beautiful, not to leave it.
That's all I have.
What's that? What's that? Counselor Shania.
Hey, how long do they got to spend money on any of the projects?
They have a, a year and then at that point we can come back for the full, you know, we can reclaim the funds through attorney action if we wanted to. So, for instance, you know, One Central, the dentist's office, they'll be coming very close. We've given them a little bit of an extension on their current, um, payback because it took us longer to cut the check than it should have. So we actually didn't start the clock with them until April. So their first check's coming due in April and we know that they are in the process of, they were delayed because they had come to us for a special permit because dentists are on our zoning and so we said, we know you're going ahead. It's just fine as long as we get our first check by April first.
So, could, what happens if the ARPA committee calls the money back, say, after a year? Well, I'm gonna, let's say, for instance, uh, what'd you say, Main Street gives the money?
Two oh five Main Street, he's done nothing.
If he's done nothing and the ARPA committee sees that it's done nothing, how, how would that work? Or even if they're telling him to spend the money within a year, say?
We could take legal action against them and ask for all of the funds back. Because it says within their contract that they are to, it says all of that, that we have the right.
It says that, okay.
Any money that you take back, you can reality off to somebody else.
If, if that was all done by, before December, when the ARPA program is done. So as far as we're concerned, the funds are obligated right now. If we wanted to, for some reason, go back for those funds, um, we'd have to reallocate them before December.
Are they gonna be spent by December of next year?
This year.
Obligated.
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 Obligated this year, but spent by next year.
Yeah, the spending, so is the way this loan program works is, once the check is cut.
Yeah.
According to the federal government, we've, we've met our obligation. So we can allow them to take longer to spend the funds. It doesn't affect ARPA at all.
The.
Go ahead, Matt.
The funds that are paid back, you know, the funds that we're paying back, that you said they go back into a revolving fund or something like that, are those gonna be loaned back out?
Yes. You know, we need to add a revolving fund to the budget process.
DeeDee.
Is there any money pad that goes to the town? I'm sure there's paperwork to be done for all of this and this upkeep. Is there a high position to be following this or who follows it all? Is it, falls on Katie or you?
Under me.
Under you.
Yeah, it took me probably a month just to design the program. I was actually hoping that when Mark Karen came on, that that was something that would fall under his wheelhouse, but it ended up being a lot more technical and it needed, you know, a lot more attention. So, uh, yeah, it took probably a month out of my office to put the program together and then doing the applications and processing the checks and, and watching it, it takes no time at all. It was really just the initial startup.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Three zero, unanimous, with all present. Very good. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for building up. I, I also remember back in the day, way back in the day, being in that building, you know, beautiful building and the bank was in there and everything. So, yeah.
It was my first elevator ride. Some kids could say, oh, you haven't seen a riding elevator.
That's right.
Mine worked in the building too for many years, so.
Ten years.
Growing up as a kid, I was running around the building too.
Your attorney could do it.
Oh, jeez.
Just tell me, do you?
Okay, item number five.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Review discuss the use of fifteen thousand dollars in miscellaneous income. Projects number eight, projects, yeah, projects number eight, zero, two, three, zero, towards housing displacement relocation expenses related to the C D B G fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Housing rehab lead abatement and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to Town Council for approval.
Solved.
Second. Make a friendly amendment on that date.
Yes. Thank you. What's your thoughts?
Sorry about that.
Well, I'm sure you could have done better.
I'm sorry.
I would, I would refer to the C D B G on these.
Okay. Go ahead, Kate.
Uh, yep. Um, neither way. I mean, uh, this is just a contingency plan. Um, we hope we don't have to deal with any lead abatement that's so serious we have to relocate people, but in the case that we do, um, we are budgeting that we would provide fifty dollars per day, per person, um, which, um, is, is a little bit low in terms of, um, lodging, um, and costs like that. But, um, we want to ensure that if it would be a long period of time, we could pay to have them out of their home, um, if it's longer than expected. Would you add anything, Peg, or?
No, we could approach this two different ways. We could have called for, we could have asked if the town council would be willing to have emergency, uh, special meetings in the case that we found lead abatement and had to help someone relocate immediately. Um, or we could do the cash on hand and we thought it would just be more convenient for everyone's time and effort if we just had the cash on hand. We have the miscellaneous funds. We use it, um, here and there for, we've used it along the way for, um, to supplement playground projects and, you know, different uses that we've needed. Uh, and so this seems very appropriate for the use of funds. In future years, we could potentially add into the C D B G budget, the lead abatement expense, but we didn't do that because Katie and I didn't have the housing rehab experience that the office had from back, you know, uh, it hasn't been done since two thousand fifteen, so we didn't know better. Um, and so this is a way for us to address it.
Okay. So, Justin Gase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. DeeDee.
Just, how many dwellings are being checked, just out of curiosity?
Um, so we have funding for probably about nine houses, um, when some of those will have multiple units. Um, and we're required to have lead testing done on any house built before nineteen seventy-eight and most, most of the applicants are pre-seventy-eight. Um, so it'll, yeah, probably be nine houses with more than, more units in total than nine.
So you may be running a little low on money if it's a lot of the older houses.
If, if the abatement requires that they be relocated, in a lot of cases, it won't, um, be necessary. It'll just be, um, like something that can be done within a day, um, and then they, they can come back in.
I was just curious, it seemed like it was kind of low. I wasn't sure how many houses it potentially you'd be looking at. Like, it could be a three-decker, so some of them can have quite a few people per family.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and I'd also, I'd guess too, if, um, abatement is being done in one unit, we could do it one unit at a time, so not everyone in the entire building would have to be out at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Melissa.
Counselor Marquette.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, three oh. Now, isn't it state law that property owners are required to check for lead in their houses?
Um, or what do you mean?
I think it is. I mean, I was looking at lead abatement state, on the state website, and this is up to the property owners. However, I'm not saying that these property owners, maybe they can't afford it, so you're helping them do check for lead. I'm just saying it is up to the property owner to check for lead in the home. To report for, not for them to have to remove it, but for them to at least, you know, check it out and see if there is lead on the property.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's, it's not, um, uh, an individual private property owner is not required to do a lead inspection. Should you go for a bank loan or should you go for public funding or something where you're being, um, you know, required to do the lead abatement? Um, or there's a, a medical reason, et cetera. Um, I think that in those cases, that's what triggers it. Um, we have found there have been some lead clearance certificates, history of lead clearance certificates that exist. Why, why do they have to get those, you know, certificates? We haven't been able to see why those were previously done. But that's how I understand it. If you wanna share with me, you know, if you saw something in the law that says they're required.
I will send you a link.
Yeah, please, that would be helpful.
I'm pretty sure that it's up to the property owners. However, if they're low income and maybe they can't afford to do it, I'm not sure that's why we're doing this. The other thing is, from what I was reading, was that lead, to remove lead isn't really that dangerous as long as you're, if you're just scraping it. Yes, if you're sandblasting it or if you're using a flame on it, then it's dangerous, but just to scrape it shouldn't really cause anybody to have to leave the house.
Um, I mean, I think it's more a question of how long the process takes. Um, if at any point there is exposure, like the process hasn't ended, they can't be staying in the property at that time and even if, if it's not a strenuous process, but it's taking a long time.
And it's a, it's the actual lead inspection and abatement is a pretty well-regulated sector in terms of, you know, we have to go by approved lead abatement companies, state-approved lead abatement companies, and they have their, um, checklists of, you know, in this situation, you deal with it this way, um, in this situation, they have to be displaced, they, you know, or they don't have to be displaced. So it's just, it's very formulaic for them.
Okay. Chairman LaRue.
Yeah, our, uh, health inspector has his certification in lead. He could actually do the inspection. When, when you have to take lead out is usually, and I'm not sure of the age of the child, but usually if there are kids in the house under a certain age, it's mandatory to get the lead out. And it has a lot to do with Section Eight Housing and some other, uh, different agencies that, that, that regulate that, but, uh, yeah, that, that whole lead is, is well-regulated as far as how to take it out and what to do with it.
With regard to the health inspector being a, a lead, being able to do lead inspections for free, the lead inspections themselves is just the formality of finding out if there's lead there and we can cover that through the block grant, no problem. That's part of the, the expense, the overall expense of the housing rehab, rather than taking time out from the health inspector. It's the, once it's detected, then we have to do the abatement, um, and that will be additionally paid for by the grant, um, and then we'll just have to take these extra funds to, to help pay for while they're out of the house.
Counselor O'Shania.
Two, two things. Mass students' lead law protects children from lead poisoning. The law requires that the removal and covering of any lead hazard in any structure before nineteen seventy-eight where a child under the age of six lives. Uh, lead paint hazards include paint or lead paint on things of windowsills and door frame holders. Homos and laylawth are responsible to complying with the lead law to, they are required to make the homes lead safe for children under the age of six. And it cannot be evicted because of that purpose either. So I had to do lead abatement when I owned the home for, because of my children. So I, I just, I hate to see us get into a situation by doing a lead abatement in somebody's home that is over, under the age of six or under. I think we need, before we commit funds to those properties, that we check that we're covered, so we don't have a child that is, has health effects under the age of six or any home that we might get involved with. The second thing is, this is the first time I heard of miscellaneous funds. Can I ask what miscellaneous funds are and how much money is in that miscellaneous funds?
Mm-hmm. It was an account that, uh, we had housing rehab, existing housing rehab loans. As the housing market got better, some people made the choice to sell their homes despite having liens on their houses from old housing rehab projects. When they sold, then the payback are lien, so we made, you know, maybe thirty thousand in one case and twenty thousand in another. So we accumulated some money into this account. Um, by the C D B G rules, it qualified as our money, so it's C D B G miscellaneous income. It's not for the state and it's been sitting in an account. We've used it. We have eighteen thousand left. Uh, we have used it towards, um, the McCann Fields. Uh, we supplemented some of that expense. Um, we used it towards the, um, Seventy-Six Central. We supplemented the acquisition and demolition, um, costs. Um, we've used it for whatever we've come to the town council for. We've approved the use of it a couple times over the last few years.
Are those miscellaneous, are, is that the only miscellaneous funds that we have within planning department or your department?
As far as I'm aware.
Okay. And what I suggest into the town manager, we kind of cover ourselves if we're involved with lead abatements. Make sure that, as far as if we get involved in beating somebody's home, that we're gonna become the responsible party for somebody that may have a health issue or something?
I mean, the, the reason we have to get these certified lead inspectors and lead abatement contractors, state-approved state contractors, is because they will follow the required laws for us. Uh, and, I mean, we have insurance for a reason. Uh, we're, I think we're doing all, the, all of the right things to protect the town. We certainly will know, uh, which houses have to be inspected and make sure that anyone ages six and under are, um, you know, are required to be inspected. So I think we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting our Is. It's, if this is common with all the housing rehab programs, it's not certain. And, and thank you for pointing out the statute. I, I guess my point would be is, we, I don't know how it's enforced. It gets enforced in these situations where, you know, there's a trigger that says we have to make sure there's no lead. Um, but in other situations, I'm not sure how, unless someone goes, you know, through a bank loan or, or something, how, how it gets triggered.
When they pull a permit.
Mine was for a refinance.
Okay, well, when they pull, okay, so I'm, I wasn't aware of how we went through a permit.
That's, that's the point I just wanted to bring up. There's a whole process through the inspectors department. Any rehab that happens, it's, it's permits of all, the data has to be taken in. My, uh, to circle back, the miscellaneous, do we change it, even that account to something else? I'm not arguing the point of you're doing a great job on where it's going and stuff because I think you're on time, but miscellaneous just sounds a little loose. And if you just gave it a name of returned funds to be reinvested or whatever, miscellaneous is a sore spot with, uh, some of the people because, uh, it's just kind of loose.
Sure, I'll, I'll ask you, counsel.
Any other discussion?
Et cetera.
There being none, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous, with all present.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Item number six. Review discuss entering into a contract with Callfield Environmental for not to exceed fee of ten thousand dollars to provide lead inspection-related services for C D B G fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three housing rehab activities and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to Town Council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
Thank you. Um, Katie.
Uh, yeah, so we, we went out, um, for bids for disposition. Um, we, there's a list from the state of all, um, state, uh, approved lead inspectors. Um, we chose within a radius, um, I think, eight or nine. Um, and we also wanted to find risk assessors. Um, there's sort of different tiers of lead inspection, um, certification, um, so we were looking for both and, uh, Miss Callfield, uh, vet both and was our only, uh, respondent, but, uh, she has worked with Southbridge's program before, um, uh, when we, the program existed, uh, for fiscal year fifteen and before. Um, so, uh, we think she's a good fit, um, and very professional and experienced.
She's got a lot of credentials.
So, yeah.
She did very well on her exams, too.
Any discussion?
Well, just curious, so how many homes are they going to be able to inspect? This kind of just covers them all, all nine properties or?
Uh, yes. So she'll, she'll be required to inspect all homes built before nineteen seventy-eight, um, that don't have a lead clearance. If, in the case, as Peg mentioned, that there's a clearance letter that says that they have been completely, um, approved and there's no lead concern, she wouldn't have to, but, um, at this point, we're assuming it would be nine projects.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Opposed in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous, with all present. Item number seven, review and discuss providing letter of support for the RISE grant presented to the town by Ann Goby, Director of Rural Affairs, for the Executive Office of Economic Development, and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to Town Council for approval.
Solved.
Second.
Yeah, I guess I'll just start, I mean, I think over the years, we've all talked about possibility of having a commercial kitchen, um, where individuals could go and cook and then go up and do their thing. So Peg had brought this, uh, grant up. It was through, or if it's also with Ann Goby, who's the rural director, um, through the, uh, Economic Development Director of Rural Affairs. So, um, she asked if we should pursue this. Uh, she provided a number of locations throughout town, uh, that possibility might fit. Pass that on to Peg as additional information.
Yeah, I think that's just about it. Uh, they've already talked to the Worcester Regional Food Hub, who've said that they would be interested and they have the capacity to potentially bring this, uh, their programs here if, um, we can potentially find the space. Um, the grant is for construction or, um, rehab of a building, so it would obviously benefit our town. Um, you know, if, it will be a nonprofit, so it wouldn't be on the tax rolls, but it would still be potentially a building. Um, you know, if it's a renovation of a building, I think that that would be good. So I think it's a, and, and I, I think that the overall goal of having a commercial kitchen is in line with our, um, economic development goals of trying to promote entrepreneurship, trying to promote more, you know, um, home-based businesses to be able to go bigger or be able to, uh, produce easier. It's also, um, they have a program that helps test, helps chefs kind of test out their, um, their performance, their, their food, um, maybe, you know, one night a week instead of happening to open a full-scale restaurant. You know, so this is sort of, it's a, it's a stepping stone for, um, potential restaurateurs.
I know somebody had, did, had contacted our office looking to see if we had a commercial kitchen because they had a food truck concept that they were, used to have and they did a lot of it in Worcester area and wanted to set up here in town, but did, needed a commercial kitchen to be able to cook and then go out into the community with their food safe, service truck and all that, but there's no space for them to cook in town. So, um, we have had an inquiry on that concept, so. Does it just allow us to apply for the grant and see where it goes?
And this is actually just to write a letter of support, um, that Jack would sign on the town council's behalf. And it's, so it would be Ann Goby's office going for the application. We are the partner on paper, showing that through this letter of support.
Just a little confused. Could this kitchen potentially be used to feed the homas or something like that or is it just? Or is it just for somebody to go there and cook and take their stuff and take it out? I'm a little confused, I'm not.
It could be any of those things. So if, for instance, the, um, Meals on Wheels wanted to rent kitchen space, by all means, they could potentially, um, you know, it depends on what the price point is and whether that works for them. Um, and, you know, how high demand the space is. Um, or a private food truck or a, you know, someone experimenting, trying to develop a product.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McAdams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, the idea of Meals on Wheels is a good one. I mean, I know that they're still struggling. They've, they've gone over to Elm Center, uh, Elm Church here, but there's no place to park and they have to carry these big, heavy things out. So if, if they could be contacted on this, uh, that would be good, I think. Is there a total amount on this grant? We don't know, we don't know what the grant will be?
We don't know what the grant will be. I don't know what she's going to ask for yet. I've given her some suggested locations and, uh, I'm su, I'm assuming she's going to work with the, um, the food hub to come up with that number.
And what about locations? Have you any ideas on locations or is that something you don't want to share with us?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I'm happy to. Um, I suggested the Thirty-five Optical Drive. It's a huge space, though, we're talking one hundred and fifty square feet, you know, one hundred and fifty thousand square feet. They probably don't need that much. Um, and then I've suggested some buildings that I know could potentially be renovated if they wanted to approach the property owners, um, in, in, in and around the downtown.
All right. That's good, thank you. I'm good.
Chairman Lozlo.
I'm in the same boat as DeeDee. Sounds good, but does it end up being a soup kitchen?
No, it's training.
No? Is it a training facility or is it an actual grant for business to open?
It's a grant to purchase a building or renovate a building that will be run by the Worcester Food Hub, the Worcester Regional Food Hub, who then, um, has a commercial kitchen that they rent out to different whoever, um, different interested parties. So you're, you're a nonprofit and you're helping to launch entrepreneurs. You're helping to promote small businesses. You're helping to promote the local food economy, a lot of the, the things that they, you know, that are supposedly part of the recipe of becoming a, an up-and-coming, um, restaurant area or food, food independent area.
Yeah, I've got a real problem with it. Uh, this might be, but this is something that involves the, you become like Worcester and don't want to be Worcester.
Kids. If I may.
Councilor.
I've been to one in Boston and it's not a cafeteria. It's a kitchen where a food truck guy goes in, preps his food. He has the ability to be able to have a, uh, a place by permit that he has a kitchen. It's not a cafeteria. People come in, sit down and like a food soupette. It's, it's a training facility. It's a, a, a beginning, end, uh, person that comes in and runs and wants to run a kitchen and that. But I've been to one after it was right next to Sam Adams. You know, it, it was a great facility and people package their stuff and leave. You have to go to one and look at it. But it's not a soup kitchen and it's not that kind of stuff.
Councilor McAdams.
Thank you, uh, through you. I would imagine it would just be like if somebody couldn't afford to rent a place to start a business or lease or even buy, it would be able to use this place. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Okay, item number eight. Uh, review discuss to accept one hundred dollars from the Hyde Group as additional funding, additional matching funds for the Massachusetts Historical Commission's Massachusetts Preservation Project Fund grant application and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Peg.
Yes, the Hyde Group was already providing this letter of support for the town. And I mentioned that in my application, uh, two years in a row, I noticed that, um, I was a hundred dollars short on cash on hand. And they said that they would be happy to, um, to provide that to the town. Rick walked down during lunchtime with a check in hand. It was very helpful.
Any discussion? Thank you, Rick Clements. You're very good to us, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this also eliminated the need to go back to council to amend a motion to try to do it again. So we appreciate the efforts.
Very good. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, all present. Item number nine. A review discuss accepting a quote for no more than three thousand dollars to conduct an asbestos survey at Seventy-Six Central Street and allow the town manager to sign any related paperwork. Entertain a motion to town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask the, um, Cal, the subcommittee to consider a friendly amendment for, um, to change the number to thirty-nine hundred and to state where the source of funds are coming from? It's the Park Grant fiscal year twenty-three. So review and discuss just accepting a quote for no more than thirty-nine hundred dollars using fiscal year twenty-three Park Funds.
Using fiscal year twenty-three Park Funds.
P-A-R-C.
Okay.
So this, this is a requirement, we're doing demolition, any demolition that we do, we have to do an asbestos, asbestos survey. So this would be the survey that we need to do to make sure, if there is asbestos, make sure that we handle it accordingly. Hopefully, there is no asbestos, but we have to do the survey to rule it out. We're gonna have to do the same thing at the community center for the kitchen upgrade too, because we're gonna have to punch a hole through the roof. So we're working with DPW on that. Today, we had a conversation about that as well, so.
Okay, any discussion? Councilor McAdams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, we spent a lot of money to appraise this property. So the appraiser did not find any asbestos, didn't look for any asbestos? I mean, I think we spent something like, if I recall, upwards of three grand to do an appraisal of this property.
I, through you, Mr., typically, an appraisal would not do an asbestos survey. And there's, the appraiser is just supposed to look at market values of a building and say, hey, this is the value of the building, this is how much we think it's worth, that's it, whether there's asbestos in there or not. They're not responsible for doing asbestos surveys.
So I take it they did not walk on the property?
You could walk on the property, but it doesn't mean that the asbestos, you can look at a floor and say, oh, that floor may or may not have asbestos until you survey it and actually test it. I did a building project in the town of Brimfield where the architect walked through the building and said, oh, I don't see any asbestos here, which we paid a renovation addition. Then when the contractor went to rip it up, they said, oh, it's asbestos. And we were building a brand-new wing over here, open air, and they found asbestos over there that we had to remediate. So just walking through doesn't tell you whether it's asbestos or not. It's the survey to say, yeah, this, this is the make, the model, or whatever you have to do to test it.
So we also spent, I think we bought the place for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we didn't think of doing an asbestos survey before we purchased the building? It seems to me that that would be the way to do it. Before you purchase something, check it for asbestos.
Good on you.
Um, it's, uh, just, it's, it's just part and parcel with doing the demo. Um, DEP or the EPA requires a certificate from a, an asbestos survey before they can go ahead with the demo. But, um, by no means would you want to obligate the town to spend money on an asbestos survey before you purchase anything.
Oh, if I were aware, I would think you'd want to know before you buy something whether it has asbestos. And the owner number, is that anything about it?
So no matter what, if you demo, you have to get the asbestos survey, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Councilor, Chairman Lozlo.
The asbestos remediation is, is a portion of a demolition. Study is done, which is pretty expensive to do the study. I agree with you, but nobody does it. Nobody does the asbestos, um, investigation before the purchase. Um, unless you stipulate it in your purchase or sales that any hazardous waste for, because they, you know, you could run into an oil tank, which is different. Uh, walk into a building, usually you see an eight-by-eight tile, that's asbestos. But when they find most of the asbestos, when they remediate, it's in the roofing. Uh, it's the roofing down around chimneys, stuff like that has the asbestos fiber. Uh, sometimes you find it in the paint. And nobody does remediation unless it's in the purchase or sales. And then, uh, that's where you, if you find it, you can go back on the previous home. It's not in the purchase or sales, you can't go on the previous home.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Dean.
Should asbestos be found, at that point, I would come back to the town. Um, I put out a bid for demo. I removed the asbestos survey from the demo and so I'm hoping the demo comes in, um, relatively affordable. And then if we have to, we'll just extend the, the demo timeline out a little bit to be able to have time to remediate and we'll come to you with a, a motion for whomever we go into lead abatement with or asbestos abatement.
Okay. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? No, unanimous, all present. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Very good.
Thank you very much.